June 26, 2013. The purpose of this public hearing is for citizens' comments on the city of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2013, and ending June 30th, 2014. Is anyone that is here to state? Any comments? Motion for adjournment?
Adjourn.
Got an adjournment?
If anybody is here to speak about this year's budget, they got now four seconds to get to the mic.
Anybody here for that subject, please approach the podium.
Sorry, Mr. Cherry.
Welcome.
Aye. I have a comment and then a question. You know, I had a chance to, yesterday and today, to kind of skim over the budget. Thank y'all for publishing that. And, you know, I see that, you know, I'm speaking for the Chamber of Commerce, of course, and I'm on the board, and I see we're not on it. You know, we've asked to be a part of the budget, and I understand from previous conversations with the board, why we're probably not on it. Is there any chance that we can be on it? Is it too late? That's one of my questions. Anybody want to answer that?
Never too late. Even during the budget year, it's not too late.
Okay, in the...
It's not that you were left out. There's a list that is priority list of projects, nonprofits, and people that are interested in supporting and partnership, or having support from the city and partnership. When we work through the budget, the things that were administrative and the things that came to the equal, and the decision not to add any or add additional Walmart money, pretty much put us at a balancing the budget with a list of things to revisit as we can look at this and see exactly what kind of impact the Walmart tax money will be able to give us freedom for. So you are on a request list along with the Boys and Girls Club, other nonprofits, Meals on Wheels, several others that have requested that we have in file, waiting for the time that we have the opportunity to say, "This money is there, and we're willing to spend it on..." It's not been discussed, so it's not out of the question, but it's not necessarily in this budget that we're doing a balanced budget on.
Okay, all right. All right, I understand it now. All right, I mean, I haven't been able to talk to you guys, and it's probably my fault. I haven't been able to talk to you individually about this. We've just been busier in the last two or three months in the real estate business than we've been in the last two or three years, and, which is great. That's a good problem. Now, I'm looking at the, your expenditures, and there's two items on here. One is the Fourth of July that you're spending $10,000 on, and the other one is in the fall for...
Haunted Trails.
The Haunted Trail, which is $6,000. So it's $16,000 on two events the city's doing that I'm going to say that kind of looks like a Chamber of Commerce kind of stuff, that, that maybe, in years past, maybe you haven't had faith in the Chamber to be able to handle more events, or it's something that, I mean, you see where I'm going with this? You've got money for that, but I think we could do it. I think the Chamber could do this stuff more efficiently, maybe cheaper, and you don't have to spend, maybe we could have that $16,000 and have a full-time person out there who is the face of the city and the ambassador for the city when people are inquiring about where to move and when their businesses are checking out a city. One of the first places they contact is the Chamber of Commerce all over the United States. And Fairview's one of the few places that does not give any money to their Chamber of Commerce.
I agree that all the things the Chamber does is great, and a lot of events are done by the Chamber. And I think at some point, it was discussed back in 2010, that the city jump in there and be able to provide entertainment for the citizens. And it was brought the May Fest, the Fourth of July celebration, and then the Fall in the Park. So those were some things that the city embraced to be able to promote the city. I think majority of the cost is towards the vendor cost. If I'm not mistaken, the fireworks is almost the cost of the budget.
Entertainment.
Right. And those, those things were just the city saying, "We don't really host anything that is..."
For profit.
Well, not for profit, but host anything that fanfares and, you know, promotes the city.
And gives back.
And that was one of the items, one of the events that they chose to do.
Well, as a, as a, we see ourselves as a partnership with the city, as well as being, you know, our mission statement is, is basically to, to promote city things and to promote businesses, to help businesses that exist here, and to recruit businesses that, that are looking at Fairview. And these are things we could do if you tell, our partner tells us that, "Hey, we want to do this, and here's the budget for it."
And see, I don't think...
We could earmark those things for that.
I don't think Fairview would be the same without the Chamber event, the Nature Fest. And that's one of the largest events that draws people in, not only to the park, but to our community. So I think the partnership is there, and finding a way, maybe in a funding or financial, as far as them being here and a face, that's a wonderful thing, but them being here more often would definitely be a benefit. So we can continue talking about that.
Well, and I, I mean, she's already, the mayor's already stated, but it's just, it's not, if something's not on the budget, it doesn't mean that we totally discarded it from the thought process, but we had an obligation to try to get a balanced budget, and we were trying not to use all of Walmart's money, even though we know they're coming, but it just wouldn't be physically responsible. So we had to go somewhere with, what's a necessity? And I understand you're like, "Oh, well, there's $16,000 if you give it to the Chamber." But the Fourth of July event is a successful event for the city, and it promotes people coming in, and so, you know, like the mayor was stating, you know, we just picked a few things to try to help bring people in. Partnership is a great idea. I mean, it really is. And I think it's something that has been talked about for many years. So, I mean, it's not, anything's not done. It's just, it's not responsible for us to, you know, balance our budget off of Walmart money that's not here. Yeah.
Okay, I understand the Walmart thing, and, but, you know, the Chamber has been unfunded for a decade now, right?
Well, they got $2,000 with the grant money, not last year, but the year before, and then also they have the space, and then also we don't charge for any of the park stuff. So, I mean, even though we're not physically having a budget line in years, it hasn't been the, the city totally neglected the Chamber. It's not been the partnership that we've...
No, I realize that. I, and I agree with that totally, but we still, we're struggling to pay a person just a few hours to be there, and we're, you know, our, our scholarship money to the high school students has been cut because of budget constraints, you know. We're depending solely, I mean, we're treading water here. We're depending solely on funds being raised through this one major event that we do at Nature Fest, and a few other little things that we do during the year. Frankly, I don't know how this, how this Chamber has, has operated over the years without any funding, any help from the city. Every other, and I have to go back, every other city in Tennessee that I can point out to you, funds there, I don't know how they do it, maybe, I don't know if they're raising taxes or not, but they find a way to fund their, their Chamber, and they, they give that, they delegate those, those events that you're talking about to their chambers and provide the funds for them to do it. And maybe they have marketing folks and, you know, that run the thing, or I don't know exactly how they do it, the nuts and bolts. I've been looking into that. This memo idea came from the Smith County Chamber of Commerce. They had a market, a lady with a marketing degree that came up with that idea. The mayor of Carthage is the one that told me about it. She says, "Hey, this is what we're doing. We doubled the size of our membership with this, with this, with this tool, and this lady's on fire. You know, she's really doing great things over here." I said, "Well, gosh, we've got to do that, too." And, so anyway, you know, I see some great things for it, so we just need a little, little, you know, oomph and a little, little cooperation here. You know, we're, we're also a little short on the board. We've only got seven board members, and we're big enough now to have eight or nine. And as we grow, we can have one board member per ten members, two, ten members that we have.
Ten members, I believe, is in the mayor.
So when we get to 200, we can have 20 board members. And so that's going to give us more help.
How many businesses are in the city?
Sir?
How many businesses are in the city?
Well, you know, that's something I haven't researched. I need to know. I can get that from Elaine Anderson, and you guys have to do permits for businesses as well?
Are you talking retail businesses, or just...
Just people that get business permits, any kind of business. 300. I was going to guess 300, but...
And you've got close to 200 of them as members?
We have 100. We have about 100 members.
And all of them are not necessarily from the city?
True.
Some are from outside the city?
Yeah.
Just participate.
On this Nature Fest, I'm chairing these corporate sponsors. We got, we're going to send out letters to anybody that sells anybody, anything to anybody in Fairview. Bread, coke, you know, cell phones, I don't care what, if they're selling something to people in Fairview, they're getting a letter asking for, for them to sponsor our Nature Fest. I think, I asked in the last meeting, what was the most money that was ever raised to corporate sponsors for Nature Fest? And it was in the year 2000, and they raised $25,000. Now, you know, that sounds like a lot of money, but I saw two girls, two women, in this city raise $150,000 in three months for the Treehouse Playground. And if they can do that, and I think a few of us can do a little better for, for a major event like this.
Well, and, you know, I agree with you. I've actually sat on the board as an employee before, representing in there, I mean, but that takes, you start a year in advance, you contact people when, before they make their budgets, go on for the next year. So it's more or less, I mean, I don't, I agree there needs to be a partnership, but the city can't fund the Chamber. I mean, it's a lot of hard work, fundraising, you get, for the May Fest, you're going to get partnerships with huge corporations. I mean, they were getting 5,000, 3,000, I mean, there was big donations to sponsor the event. So, I mean, I do think it's great, and I, we are not doing enough, and that's, you know, I can be quoted on that, but I, I really think that if you're looking for us to run the Chamber, we can't do that.
No, 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 we're just looking for a little help. The, now, the donations on Nature Fest went down when the economy tanked, you know, so that's, that's the reason why 2,000 looked good and everything since then has gone, gone downhill. And, and it could be other reasons, too, but that's, that was the reason, when I asked the question, "Why has it, you know, gone downhill since?", they said, "Well, the, the corporate sponsors that had given big donations in the past, it just started shrinking each year." Some of them went from, you know, I think the highest one, we gave like 5,000 one year, they, they got down to about 500, and they cited the economy, you know, it was healthcare, I think it was Williamson Medical. And I remember they gave, they wrote a check for like $15,000, $20,000 for the Treehouse Playground. I don't think they could do something like that again, because they've been creamed by Obamacare.
Well, they, I mean, Middle Tennessee Electric and Williamson Medical, they still give money out, so, I mean, it's, you just have to have people that are consistent in going after that money. Now, granted, the economy is the economy, so, I mean, I think everybody suffered, that anybody that ever had to raise funds suffered from the economy, so, being hit.
Okay, thank you. And I, I think the point of, what I'm going for here is, I would like to get us foot in the door here, give us something to start with, so that there's a, you set an example for future boards, that this Chamber will be funded by the city every year with something. You know, I know I started off with a big number, but you got to start somewhere. Why would I start with a small number? I mean, that'd be dumb. Give us something, get us going, make us a priority in your budget, please, because we are a partnership, we are the face of the city, we are the ambassador to all the new businesses that open here. You know, people, they don't know we're just a nonprofit organization. We are chartered by the state, but they think we're almost like a part of the government, you know, that they, they see us as the face of the city, don't they? Don't they, barely? You know they do.
I'm here from the government.
I'm sorry, mayor.
I'm here to help you.
Yeah. But anyway, if I, if, if we were putting this to a vote right now, how would each one of you say? If you had the extra money, would this be unanimous? Would all give money? Or is there anybody just totally opposed to giving money to the Chamber?
I think anybody not as opposed to giving money to the Chamber, and as she stated earlier, it is part of our future, what we're looking at, it's, it's not, it's not today. It's not going to happen today, and nobody's going to stand up and say, "We're going to give it to you because we're just, we're not in that position to be able to do it." But on my part, I can sit up and say that, yes, I am 100% part of helping funding, but it's just not just a partnership, but helping funding because what it takes. And I've talked to city manager on a charitable occasion, just off, off books, about us branching out and going out and bringing other businesses and corporations into the city with the help of the Chamber. So, you know, that's, it's, it's not forgotten, not going, I don't, I don't think it's not going to happen, as far as I'm, because I'm going to bring it up, that we have fun to change on. I'll say that on the public record, I don't mind doing that a bit, because that's been my intentions for quite some time now, because we need a partnership to go out and do that. If it's a matter of taking from a nonprofit that, that, and I, and I can use helping hands or something like that for a small amount of money, taking from them, I have a problem with that, but I see our economic growth doing very well, very well in the near future, and has definitely been able to, to help support the chair and the financing. So my vote would be, I guess it would be my last standing vote, because I don't have to, but you, they have my support, if you put it like that, too. And I think they have the support from everybody else here, basically. I don't, I think, I don't know. But they're, no, they're not going to obligate money for that.
I've got a question for you, Mr. Cherry.
Okay.
You brought, you brought up something that's, that's rather puzzling, and, and one reason why it was defunded in the past. What is the current value of the scholarship that y'all give out?
In the past, is my understanding, and I'm new to, I'm, I'm new to the, to the board, but in my understanding, that there was, there was two scholarships given, $1,000 each. And in the first board meeting I attended, they talked about reducing those two to $500, because there wasn't enough to leave us with a safety, a margin of safety, to have enough in there for the very next year.
Since you're new to the board, you may not be able to answer this, but in chambers past, they would take the money that the city allocated to them, and they would set it aside for the scholarship every year. I don't know whether they do that anymore or not, but how much sense does it make to you? We'll put it in comparison. When you go to church and you tithe on Sunday, do you give it to your neighbor and let them go tithe for you? Because this, why would the city give the Chamber money to, so the Chamber can give a scholarship instead of the city giving their own scholarship? The Chamber before, they set the money aside, given from the city, for the scholarship. Why wouldn't the city just give the money for the scholarship?
Well, good point.
Can I share with you some information to answer him?
Sure.
Being involved with the Chamber in delivering the scholarships to the high school many years, we had reduced that to $500, because that money that was spent for the scholarship was interest money from the CD that was put aside. That money went down to like .001 in percentage, and it wasn't enough to cover. And the last year or two, it's been taken out of general funds. So never, in my acknowledgement, in years and years and years, I've been involved in the Chamber for 25 years, that I've ever seen money from the city be allocated for scholarship in any, and Ms. Jerry Stark has been a scholarship committee chair, as long as I have, can remember.
But you said general funds, that's out of the Chamber Commerce's general funds.
Money that's been made, spent, borrowed.
They had a CD, and, and the interest was so, like, nil, that it wasn't enough money out of the interest.
People moved, what, a couple years ago, because the luck rate was getting so, was so low?
How much do you have in the operating fund right now?
I don't have that information with me, but I can get it.
What's the income from the membership?
Well, there's 100, say, say there's 100, just for round numbers, 100 members, most of them are, you know, corporate members, that's $75 per, and there's a few individuals, which is 35, and then there's a handful of, of honorary, you know, charter members. So you can do the math.
Did you finish your question and your comment?
I, I think I'm done, so I'll let somebody else hog the time.
Great information.
Thank y'all very much, and if, just one other thing, if there was no Walmart, I'd still be here asking for you guys to, to help. I just don't, you know, I don't understand why this has got to be tied or not tied to Walmart.
Well, and actually, that's a great point, but the thing about it is the economy and the budget, and so a lot of our costs have gone higher, and then we cut the tax rate a couple years ago. So now, with the economy and fuel costs and some of the other things, we're still having to operate the city.
Yeah.
And so now, we're just having to realistic, I, I mean, it's a great point. I mean, we, why should we, you know, that have to be a consideration, but unfortunately, this is where we are. We're like the rest of America, and we're just trying to be responsible, and...
But you've made two statements here, that I've had the kind of gift, and how bad it was for the Chamber and everybody, businesses everywhere, city sales, tax dollars, the whole thing. And you've also made a compliment, a statement about the last two months have been the best spending year. Well, hopefully, it's going to be, the next little bit, it's going to be the best for the city, and we're going to be able to do more, just like...
Yeah, it's a lag. You'll see it coming. I mean...
That's anticipation, I mean, and the more we have, the more we can do with it.
I appreciate what you guys do, I really do. Don't, don't think I'm beating you up or anything like that. You know, I'm just passionate about this, and I've had a lot of fun. I thought, I didn't think it was going to be like this, but I'm really enjoying it. By the way, who is Quint? Is Quint for Quint, 52,000?
He's related to the fire chief.
I've got me. That's a lot of Quint for Quint.
I think it's a child he's birthing.
I think you're pretty high up on the list that the mayor was speaking of, Mr. Cherry, so, but you, but you might, you, you brought up a great point about the Walmart thing.
Yeah. Well, I mean, they could have said, "Hey, we're going to, we're going to Centerville for y'all."
Absolutely.
Or Bonn aqua.
And just, just a few short days ago, when we had a meeting, and then we were discussing police cars, whether the Walmart comes or not, we're going to have to have the new police cars.
There you go.
That's, you, you brought up a very good point.
Thank y'all very much. Y'all have a good evening.
Motion for adjournment?
Just close it. Just close it.
Public hearing adjourned. Good evening. I call to order the Board of Commissioners special called meeting, June 26, 2013, at Those who will, please join us in the pledge and the prayer. The Holy Father, thank you for this day, thank you for the opportunity to serve others and serve you. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Item 2A, discuss and/or take action on second reading of Bill 2013-14.
Bill number 2013-14, ordinance number 809, is an ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting a budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2013, and ending June 30th, 2014, and setting a tax rate. Move for approval?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Good evening. I call to order the public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is for citizens' comments on the city of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting a tax rate.
Anyone wish to speak on that, right?
Adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Special, sorry, special call. Good evening. I call to order the Board of Commissioners special called meeting, June 26, 2013, at Item number 2A, discuss and to take action on second reading of Bill 2013-14.
It's an ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting a budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2013, and ending June 30th, 2014, and setting a tax rate. Move for approval?
Second.
And it is 63 and a half cents.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 2B, discuss and take action on second reading of Bill 2013-13.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to ask for this one to be deferred, as we're still waiting on the account to be set up with the translator service.
What are the wishes of the board?
So moved.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 2C, discuss and/or take action on amendment to county school facilities fund for the purpose of funding a portion of the library expansion.
Resolution number 8-13 is a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, to execute an interlocal agreement with Williamson County upon passage and present amendment to the addendum of the local, interlocal agreement of Williamson County relative to the use of adequate schools facility tax proceeds to expand the public library located in Fairview, Tennessee.
I'll make a statement here. We've discussed many times about the library being less square footage than our usage, and it was discussed with the county. The county here is approving funds that are set aside as the school facility tax. They have given permission and/or giving an addendum to the city of Fairview to utilize that money to participate in expansion of our Fairview library.
They already voted on that.
No, they, they holding up, waiting on us. Do we already have an option?
And this amount that we're trying to fill, is that the 64,000?
There's not an amount at this point.
All that resolution does is authorize the mayor to execute. This is an interlocal agreement, it's a two-party agreement. The information that I have is that the county's been considering, I think, at their July the 10th meeting.
Yes, sir.
And all this does is, once they sign off on the addendum to the interlocal agreement, it gives the mayor the authority to sign off on the interlocal agreement. The resolution specifically reserves the amount in those discussions for a future date after this is done.
Move to approve.
Any discussion?
Just so I understand, so we're not approving the expenditure of the money tonight?
Yes, sir.
We're just simply letting the mayor agree in principle to do this. We would have a, we have the option of, if we couldn't agree on an amount, to not participate at a later date?
This, this resolution, Commissioner, does not bind the city to any money. All it does is, since this is an interlocal agreement, it's a two-party agreement, it, it confirms what I was saying the other day, the county has the same opinion that I did. I didn't want the city to get caught in the middle on this. This being, the library being a public purpose, no question about that, and I've said that before, but it is not directly a school facility. And since the money came from the county, that's, as I said in the, one of the previous meetings, that I wanted to have the county involved in this, because that's where the money came from, and they would be the only people to contest it. They agree by what they're saying, and they want to amend the interlocal agreement. Once they approve that on July the 10th, the county mayor signs off on it, it'd just be an interlocal agreement saying that this project could be, that Fairview could, could take money from the adequate facilities fund to fund their portion if they so desire. It doesn't set an amount, doesn't set any square footage, doesn't have any plans, it's just a bi-party agreement that needs to be approved by both parties.
Thank you for that explanation. No further questions.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great milestone. Thank you for the county, thank you for the library, all the representatives that have put forth, and all the citizens that have said this is something that will benefit. A library is a heartbeat of a community, so I'm totally far, and I'm excited to see what we have ahead. Thank you all. Item number 3A, discuss and/or take action on... Item number 3A, discuss and or take action on Bill 2013-15.
Bill number 2013-15, ordinance number 810, is an ordinance for the amendment of the City of Fairview budget, Tennessee budget for fiscal year 2012, 2013 budget year. Move for approval?
We have a motion and a second discussion?
Do you have any questions about the grant information or anything?
If you want Crystal to explain, she has.
Do you have explanations that can kind of break it down? I've really not had a lot of time to discuss and read over this.
Yes, ma'am, certainly. The first item on the ordinance, the amendment, is the fireman's safety grant. That was the grant we got. I believe it was in December of last year that allowed us to hire the three veteran firemen. So this money is strictly, it started with a zero budget because when we did this budget last year, we had no idea we were going to get this grant. So this is the 37,000, 37,166 is actually what we have received back from the state so far. So I have a, a revenue line item and two expenditure line, or, I'm sorry, that one covers three expenditure line items. It covers their salaries, it covers their retirement, as well as their health insurance. The second item on the, on it is the governor's highway safety grant that we get for our police department. That one covers the, a portion of the police overtime, only the ones that work saturation or roadblocks. And it also covers a portion of purchases that were made by the police department, the purchases that were approved in the beginning for the grant. And that was $20,247. The next item is $11,464. That's the amount that we have paid to date for the welcome to Fairview signs. If I understood Mr. Holsinger, the last meeting, the only thing left to purchase for the third sign is the actual sign piece itself. So that money is coming from the 20,000 that was allocated in the capital improvement fund, but I only brought in the actual 11,000 that we have spent. The rest, the other 7,000 is still sitting in the, the reserve account. And then finally, the $8,235 is the moving of the electrical for the widening of Bowie Lake Road.
Mm-hmm.
So that, we paid it out of the park department account, or their fund. And so this would be, I'm asking to bring it in from the actual park reserve account to cover it because we, last understood, half of the Bowie Lake Road widening was going to be street aid and half park fund. And this is the only expenditure to date that would need an amendment. And those are the only amendments on this, this.
On the Bowie Lake Road, you spoke of the park, that's 124,000?
Oh, that-
And then the street funds was the other, the 124 split?
Right. But the only thing we've actually paid to date is 8,235 for the moving of, of the utility. So I'm not asking to bring in that extra yet, just to, to cover the expense that we've paid to date.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I want to know, did you ask me?